I'm having a little problem with the Cemetery Commission. Not the one that was just elected this year, but back in May 6th, 2014, I got a plot to the Main Street Cemetery. In the spring of 2015, I was notified that someone's ashes had been buried on my plot. I got a phone call and asked if I would be willing to take another plot. And I said certainly. And it certainly was someone else's ashes buried on my plot, a good friend of mine. So I took another plot. And I got no deed again. It took me from the spring of 2015 to October 5th of 2015 to get a new plot. I don't care if people mess with me, but I don't want to mess with my family. A few weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, I was notified again that there were issues down there. Would I take another plot? I said I would. I need a deed. Today is the 30th of September, or August, excuse me. I do not have a deed. This is unfair to my family. And I have the proof that I will give to the Board, if I may step up, about how this was handled, my deeds. And I still have no deed. I'm off $450. That's not the issue.
Are these afforded? Red, are these copies?
Those are copies.
Okay.
You can have them.
Because I didn't want to. So, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
My understanding is, last spring, they told you again that they have to change the plot.
Yes, yes.
And as of last spring to today, last spring being 2016.
Yes.
You haven't seen a new deed.
No.
So you need a new deed.
Exactly.
All right. A quick question. It was changed once. Was that last year and changed again recently?
Um, I got it in 2014, in May. Then I was notified in March of 2015.
Right.
And it took from that date to October 5th of 15 to get a new deed. Like I say, I don't mind people messing with my life, but I don't want to mess with my families.
All right. But then they swapped it again, or?
I have no deed.
Okay, still no deed.
I've made phone calls, but no response. Thank you.
So, Red, please stay here for a minute.
Sure.
So, what it looks like to me is, it's inevitable with the Cemetery Commission. Do you wish to send a memo to the Cemetery Commission, asking for an update of why this hasn't been resolved?
I mean, he came to us for some action, so I think the least we can do is send a memo to the Cemetery Commission, asking for an update, and getting it back to Mr. Gwinor.
That seem workable?
It's totally.
I know, Shannon, you just walked in.
This is what you were telling me about a while ago, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so this has been going on for like some time now.
Two years, over 30 months.
And you spoke to me about this last year.
Right.
Yes, I did.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I've come to, you know, Town Administrator, and not much happens when you go there, as we all know. As I know, anyway.
Well, what has the Cemetery Commission been telling you, anything, or just not getting back to you?
They don't even respond.
So they're not even getting back to you?
Yeah.
All right.
I did get a call yesterday.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it a motion.
One second. To send a memo?
Send a memo requesting information and update on when Mr. Gwinor will get his deed.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Heather, when you have time? Okay.
Just for the Board's record on this piece, Mr. Gwinor has been into the office a few months ago. I actually instructed my assistant, Belvis. She did a great job. She actually drafted an email to the Water Commissioner. So that piece, it was either email or letter, but we have been involved in this process in the past. And my understanding from Judith, who is the Chair of the Cemetery Commission, as Mr. Gwinor has expressed, they did reach out to Mr. Gwinor again yesterday. Unfortunately, the phone call did not go well and ended abruptly, is my understanding.
Yeah, but if the call went out yesterday, he's been waiting on this like two years.
I understand that, Shannon. Judith's explanation that she left me in a voicemail earlier today was, they are in the, they understand his concern and they are just as concerned. They said that they are actually in the process of doing a whole lot, like literally a lot, not a quantity.
Okay. He's come to us, we understand.
Absolutely.
We understand. We're sending a memo to the Cemetery Commission. Cemetery Commission can respond to us. Once we get a response, we'll go back to Mr. Gwinor, tell him what we have learned.
We need a deadline on that response.
Well, we have no jurisdiction over the Cemetery Commission. They're elected.
Request it like yesterday, and maybe put a nice little letter in there saying hurry up. Because if he's waiting for two years, we're not going to just put a letter out there and say, "When you get a chance."
No, but what I'm getting at is, I mean, if you send a memo to a different Board that's elected, you basically wait for them to respond.
Until whenever.
But I mean, what are we going to do if I say, well, let's say 10 days? Then what?
So they don't have to respond, is what you're saying?
I think it'd be nice if we could ask them to get it back to us before the next Select Board meeting, just to put a date out there.
And that's fine. I have no problem with that. I just, you know. Is that doable?
That's next week, correct?
That's right.
It's just, we just want a response.
Of course, next week's Selectmen's Meeting is not actually a full-born Selectmen's Meeting. It's basically on personnel.
Okay.
That's a big assumption.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
So, we're here four weeks in a row. So next week is the 6th, which is regular meeting. That joins us back into the bi-weekly schedule. The 13th is a special, just to do personnel stuff, and then the 20th is regular.
All right, so next week. They should be able to respond by next week. Okay? Mr. Gwinor?
Yes, I don't want this to drag on.
Well, that's the reason why we're trying.
Right, but now you're talking about how long you can let it go, how long you let it go. I do have an attorney, and I'm sure he'll love it.
Well, that's fine. I mean, you know, the point is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking help.
And we're trying to give you help. And we've already asked for, basically, by next Tuesday.
I hope it happens. Thank you.
Please come back, and we'll see where we go. Mr. Gwinor also says here you want to speak to us about driveway regulations and policies.
Right. Are you going to be speaking? You going to be speaking about that tonight?
Yes, we'll be reviewing the current policies. Do you want to hold that back until we get into all of them?
What time do you think that might be? These guys work for a living. They have to go to bed.
I know most of these guys.
I'm serious.
I'm guessing a half hour?
I guess that'd be okay. It'll have to be.
I gave you the floor, you could have did it right now.
Okay. Are they going to be able to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm stopping anybody. Even if I try to stop anybody, it don't seem to succeed anyways.
It seems that this is another way to try to stop building in Southampton. I fought it for 42 years. I was sick of fighting it, but now I'm back in the game. This is insane. Thank you.
Are we on the subject now?
Absolutely. Come on, let's, you guys got to go back to bed and all the rest of that. I was, I explained it.
I don't have to go to bed. Well, anyway, I guess, I really just got a hold of this paper today, but.
Sure.
What I'm looking at here is, I put driveways in, just like Red did for a lot of years, but at the same token, the first paragraph of this talks about the Highway Superintendent not signing permits for driveways unless they come through with an architect, with an engineer's stamp plan that shows everything on it, including the grades for the driveway, the setbacks, the whole thing. That costs money. There's a lot of time involved in this. I think that, when you look at the rest of this stuff in here, there's a lot of things that will affect a lot of properties from maybe being built on. But I think that in most towns, I've built in a lot of towns, this is not the way it is. And it's still not the way it is, but there probably some got adjusted from then. But at the same token, you have a highway department here with eight to 10 people in them. The highway boss can delegate people to go out there and look at things. A lot of towns require you to have a gravel inspection before you can pave. There's things involved. The criteria in this, this thing here is tough. I mean, for anybody to meet grades of 10% on a whole lot, you know.
Well, let me, let me turn this around, okay? Now, you know me, we've all worked on stuff, you know, this is not. The reason we review a policy and give 10 days is to give people time to look at stuff and to do exactly what you're doing, raise flags, saying, hey, this is an issue, this is, you know. So, and I don't know how the Board feels about this, but suppose we put this policy aside for another 10 days, but in those 10 days, you as the builders come back with a modified driveway policy that gives us direction of what you would like to say?
I think that's something that's doable, you know? I'm not sure if you could put all the builders together and come up with a consensus, but if everybody writes up their own, you'd have to ponder through them. But I think the biggest thing in this whole thing is having to have every landowner or developer come up with a driveway plan and a proposed plan to give to the Highway Super that shows exactly grades. Then you have to come back, get the grades put in, get the grades approved, and sign off from whoever. That's going to be a tough regulation to follow. It seems like this regulation here took to the furthest point of any level of a driveway that you could find. It even, it goes over the state levels. That's why we've got a disclaimer in here. The state's got their own regulations. This guy, the scenic roads, got their own regulations. This one here is going to be tough for a lot of people, even in a small subdivision. It's going to be difficult to lay flat for 20 feet into a subdivision and accelerate the grades. This has to be carefully looked at. You even think about this with a common driveway bylaw you already got in place. You got, you got to, if you put this in place, you got to review that bylaw. There's other things getting involved, because that bylaw is set in stone. So, this thing here is, as far as I can see, has gone to the outside of anything that can be done. You've got a, you've got a Department of Public Works with at least 10 people in them, or eight people, anyway. That thing can be regulated at any point. If a guy puts a driveway in and it fails, or something fails, and you get a massive storm and damage is done, it should be the homeowner that takes care of that problem. I had one in that deluge we had about a month ago. It cost me a lot of money to repair that. I didn't go to the town and say, "Look, give me a hand." I got the Bobcats in, the tractors in, and we straightened it out. In two days, we were done. Swept, cleaned up, everybody was happy. But I think that because of a few driveways that got affected in storms in Southampton, everybody shouldn't pay a piper for that. I think that the homeowner's responsibility is to take care of these runoffs and stuff like that, in some degree. I do believe there is room for regulation, some way, but not this way. This is, this is, you go into other, you go into Northampton, Eastampton, parts of Southampton, you can't, you can barely bring fire trucks through the roads themselves, let alone set this in place. So if you want to, if you want to build a building on an infill lot, say, Northampton on Market Street, what would you do with this? Nothing. You throw the lot away. That's kind of the way it is. So, I think this is heavily got to be looked at before, especially with engineering design on these. It shouldn't be that way. So, that's it. But I'll get a letter out.
Stay there for a second, I've got a question.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
You're saying, or Charlie was saying, everybody get together and come in with some regulations, but easier, is there a local city or town that may have a good set of driveway regulations that we can adopt? If it's working somewhere else on the builders and the town side, that may be the place to start with it.
Well, I think you've got towns, you've got Northampton. Easthampton's kind of what we got now, is not much difference. But Northampton's got some regulations over there. Their engineering department's been, I built over there in the 80s and 90s, and their regulation was worked, and it was, it wasn't done on a, an engineering platform, it was done by, by the Department of Public Works. They gave you a permit, you followed their little grade up to this property line, they didn't care if you built a, you built on top of a mountain, as long as your, the city interest of the road was met to their specs, they did it. Before you could pave there, you call them up, sometimes it took you a couple of days before the guy, they used to get mad because they couldn't pave. They come out, approve it, or say, build it up a little more, do this or do that. They sent their guys out, shot a couple of grades, you paved it. But they didn't give you this. They didn't, they didn't make it go through a standard of this stuff. But the Planning Board in Southampton requires you to bring your, your plan in for review. If you're over an acre of disturbance, they say, "Well, we want a storm water management plant. We want this, we want that." So you do it. They, they don't care if you built on top of a mountain, as long as you control your water. That's really what that part of it is. So the Planning Board's already got a pretty good handle on what you do. This here is, is just a, to bring in engineers to design for you, try to bring it through. In other words, you, you have to put in, you have to have an engineer go out there and give you a grade, you have to have a final grade, just like a septic tank, you go through a process. So, that's going to be a costly thing for a driveway, but we've got gutters in these roads. We know where certain water's going to go, but in certain things, when you get a, when you get a 50-year storm or 75-year storm, things do happen. There's no question about it.
Don't have to tell me that.
But that's my beef. My beef is to have to get engineers to do a thing that the town highway department can, can do. It's no different than a fire chief going out and checking smoke detectors. He delegates maybe another guy to do it, whatever the case is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, any thoughts?
I just have one question. This driveway regulation, is that something that the Selectmen adopt, or does that go to town meeting?
Selectmen adopt this. Basically, what happened was the town adopted a bylaw that authorized the Selectmen to adopt the regulations for driveways. So, it's been sitting there, and there's been some issues in town, so this is the first attempt to try to put some regulations together. My key to this is first attempt.
So is there not one right now? Is there not a driveway regulation?
Nothing that's really workable. It's pretty much, everybody sees, that's my understanding of it, is you see it, you think it's bad, then you make somebody correct it, but it's not that somebody's got some guidance documents.
So where did this one come from? That was my question. Yeah.
This was developed through the Highway Superintendent, based on his connections with other towns to try to do something. Heather's got more?
Yeah, so I'd love to go into that for a second.
Folks.
Hey, guys. See what I mean about can't control anybody from talking?
So.
Well, when you jack with people's money, it tends to get personal.
I know.
I'm sorry.
So, this, this regulation, where it came from, so there was a little discovery when we were looking at the general bylaws. There's nothing in the bylaw specifically that speaks on driveways, except for the common driveways. There's a lot of concern. We've actually had quite a few issues with driveways recently, not just with, you know, water runoff, but more so with problems with folks not fixing it, or concerns of coming for permits after the fact and so forth. Randall is very concerned, and he had reached out to other communities, and this regulation didn't come from thin air. This regulation actually came from a compilation of various other communities' regulations. It's actually rather similar to Palmer's regulations and their actual bylaws that they have adopted. In this process, Randall also did not work in a vacuum. He actually involved quite a few minds in this piece. Once he went through the first couple drafts of this, he actually sent it out. We have a new building construction group. We meet once a month, and the building construction group consists of myself, someone from Planning Board, usually someone from ZBA, Building Commissioner, someone from the Board of Health, someone from the Water Department, the Highway Superintendent. In this case, because this was such an important piece that we wanted outside review on, we actually pulled in Larry Smith from PVPC, and he took an hour or so of his time to come in and meet with us on this piece. So, these regulations, again, they weren't created in a vacuum, they were used off templates of other surrounding communities, so we've already reached out to them on that piece. And I think, just going back to what Charlie said, if the builders as a group would like, I'd be, I would be more than happy to email this out to one in particular person if they want to head this project up, and they can put it in draft mode, and everyone can email it around, put their feedback and comments, and where they specifically have concerns, and we can look at it for revising in the future.
So, my question is, you said other communities, you said Palmer. So, Mr. Boyle had named quite a few of our communities around here, and these are our builders that work in our town, and no one, you didn't mention any of them in this committee or asking any of their feedback to put this together. Would there have been a reason why we wouldn't have reached out to them in the making of this, since we don't really have one, anyway? I mean, they primarily build in our town. Their feedback probably would have been helpful.
I can't answer the logic of how the research was done, because I wasn't part of the research. But I'm trying to keep the door open so that we move in a good direction for our builders. I didn't know there was such a thing, but.
Right, I would consider them to be our builders. They build the majority of what's in our town, you know?
You know, it's our homeowners, too.
So, thank you, Heather, for some of that, and that goes to some of the questions I had, and where's this coming from? I don't know of any person I talked to in town that stands around and asks for more regulations. So, you, Heather, indicated that there were some complaints. Are those isolated incidents that should be addressed by the homeowner? And now we're taking a governmental approach and taking a wide sweeping approach and throwing a hammer down? So, my concern is that this board that you just described is being put together to proactively look at things that are not being, issues that are not being brought up by citizens in this town. So, again, 300 years this town has been around and hasn't had a driveway regulation, and I don't see a problem. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to lay down martial law on driveways. You guys, if this goes into effect, you will make a good portion of my land unbuildable. Because you know what a 2% grade is? It's about like that, for 25 feet. And then it goes to a 4% grade for another 30 feet. So that's 55 feet of driveway that can't go up more than 6%? It's absolutely absurd. And then on top of that, one curb cut, so I can't put a circular driveway in anymore. We've just, we outlawed those in town. But now it's up to Randall if we want, because he's the one person that can override that. So, again, I better skip him on my Christmas card list, or I'm going to have issues. Stamp plans? Not a big deal for me as a builder, because I have stamp plans. But homeowner comes in, wants to put another driveway, wants to move their driveway, now they've got to go get stamp plans. So my question would be, and I asked Randall this, do you have where our easements are in town? We don't even have our roads mapped out. So is this a way for us to help build a database on the expense of the private citizens of where our easements are for our town roads? I had no idea where the easements are on Quigley Road. So, I'm just wondering what the alternative, ulterior motive is on stamped graded designed plans? It's not. And then you brought up surrounding neighborhoods? I just took an hour this afternoon and did a quick search on towns of similar size. You can compare Palmer, much bigger town, much bigger things going on. Northampton, much bigger, different topology. Here's Great Barrington, right here. Here's town of Reading, Reading, Mass. About the same population. Very easy, non, nowhere near what we put together. So my question really is, again, why are we proactively looking to create more regulations if the citizens aren't asking for it? And why would we jerk the wheel so hard from nothing to one of the strictest driveway requirements in the whole state? And then on top of that, how's the town going to address the situation where you take a landowner, that's property, that's now unbuildable? And you're now basically denying access to my private property. You're devaluing my property. And I know that's just going to open up for more litigation, which is going to cost more time, more resources of this town. And it goes back to that first question. What are we trying to solve? And if it's runoff into the roads, that can be addressed, as Mr. Boyle said, and Mr. Gwinor said, through the Planning Board, through other regulations, there's storm water management. God knows I'm spending a lot of money on Quigley Road right now for storm water management. $600,000 I'm spending on storm water management and pavement up on there on that road. So, I don't see, I see this being way overstepping. And I'd be more than happy to put what I found, the only comment I have back on getting all the builders together, you're now putting it on our shoulders to go carve out more of our time to do something we don't want. If you want the builder's opinion, leave it the way it is. I think we've done a good job in this town. We have one of the most desirable towns. We're doing a good job, and there's no reason to jerk the wheel and start overregulating this town. Thank you.
Mr. Gwinor?
It's Mr. Gwinor again. I live on a street with 10 homes. This regulation would eliminate three homes. The three homes' total assessment is over $1.2 million, which equals $20,000 in revenue to the town. There's no children. I built that project about 16 years ago. We've only had two children in public schools in Southampton. As far as what's going on in town, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Eastwood Drive. It's an 11% grade coming down to Lion Street. That was okay. That was okay then. Now you want it flat.
Thank you, Mr. Gwinor. Board members, thoughts?
I would like to jump into a, I mean, from our point of view, I think we need some kind of regulation that's fair to the builders and fair to the homeowners. I think this is overly so. But I, and I may be quoting Mr. Boyle incorrectly, but some comment, basically, like when a driveway's done and it starts, and there's an issue with the rain and it comes apart, it's up to the homeowner to correct that. See, from my point of view, if I pay $10,000 for a driveway that one of you folks just put in, I expect to be able to go back to you and have you correct it, not just leave it to me. So I'd want some teeth like this to be able to go back. But I don't want so much teeth that's going to stop you from building on your property. I think regulations are good if they're fair on both sides. It gives you a basis to know where to go by, and it gives homeowners some protection. So that's where I come from. But I agree, this is overly restrictive.
And I think that it's fair, and we all try to build.
Let me let all the board members chime in, and then I'll let everybody wrap it up.
Okay.
Okay? Because if we do it this way, and I'll tell you right now, it's going to go way past our bedtime.
This is worth staying up for.
Sometimes I've been told that. Ladies, any thoughts?
Well, I, I like the idea of the contractors drafting a livable, realistic plan. We have to, they're going to make some plan here, they're going to do it. We can't just stay the way it was. So, with that said, giving the contractors the time to come together, to find something in here that you think is applicable to your businesses, and save for the residents here. in here that you think is applicable to your businesses and save for the residents here. I mean, I think we should have something, but I don't want to overload with too much regulation.
Well, I'm just, are we jumping ahead because this was just open time to the public? So are we actually just going to nail this down right now?
I figured, if everybody's here, let's just do it, then we could get into the other stuff, because I'm sure they don't want to hear about free cash and all the rest of that.
Right. All right, my two cents on this. I understand there's a few driveways in town that were a headache. One on Pleasant Street, I think, one on Moosebrook, and I think there's one other, I can't recall. Yeah, that's a problem. Does it warrant this? I think this is a little bit the other direction. We've got to come up with something a little more reasonable. We can't eliminate people's ability to build on their lots. We have to have a policy in place that will allow us to work together, so the town accomplishes what they want. You know, they protect the runoffs. Let me go back to the stormwater management. The stormwater management only kicks into effect when you disturb more than 40,000 square feet. So if somebody builds in a lot and doesn't disturb more than 40,000 square feet, that doesn't come into play. So you could have a driveway issue where the planning board has no jurisdiction over the storm runoff on it. So three driveways in a lot of years, I think this is a little bit too much. I think it should be up to the homeowner. If you have a runoff, they're going to address that. And I think we can maybe rework this regulation and make it a little more friendly for everybody.
So what I'm hearing, I know I was going to let you guys speak, but what I'm hearing is the board basically wants to table this for further review.
Absolutely.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yep. But we don't want to get rid of it.
Then someone needs to make a motion.
To get rid of it?
No. Table it for further review. You can make a motion to get rid of it, but we never enacted it, so there's nothing to get rid of it.
Didn't we make a motion to put it off to the next board meeting?
I...
Oh, that was the, that was...
That was the discussion, but we never got anywhere with it.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, again, I don't think that they like the idea of sitting down around a table and spending hours, but it'd be nice if you can give us some input from other towns. You had one from Great Barrington somewhere else, but I don't know if Great Barrington's like Southampton, to be honest, but it's, I think we should look at it and have Randall, Randall take that...
It's got lots of hills.
Yeah, right. But then have Randall sit down with some folks, maybe at an open meeting, and let them talk. All right. So I'll make a motion, retable it for the next couple of months to give Randall a chance to revise or review it, and have some of the builders come in with some of their thoughts and maybe some policies.
Just table for further review.
Yeah. Let's do it that way.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. Gwynn.
What are we, open time to the public?
I knew if I did that. You want another turn, right? Let me ask everyone a question in the room. Do you understand what we just did?
Yeah.
I like the table.
We just put it on table, and we'll go back to this when we get...
But there'll be plenty of notice on the website.
There better be. There better be. Remember, we also established a policy that if we're going to review a policy, we open it and then we wait 10 days for the next meeting before we actually act on it, and that's so that everybody gets a timeframe to respond to it. We're trying to slow the train down so that everybody can get on board.
Appreciate it.
Okay? Yes, Mr. Gwynn, it's open time for the public again.
So we're kind of on a roll tonight, you know? Speaking of things not getting done, the handrail.
The handrail. Would you like an update?
Let me finish.
Okay.
It was approved at town meeting in October of 2015. Mrs. Ahart asked the question in January of 2016. You came up with the answer, it couldn't be put in because the epoxy wouldn't set.
That's correct.
That's right. Well, I think the epoxy would have set pretty much all winter. So there again, somebody was in charge to get this done, it didn't get done.
Would you like an update?
I know the update. They can build a ball field down there in a couple of months for, I think, around $40,000. They can't do a handrail? Somebody's sleeping at the switch. And I'll bring up one more, and then I'll stop.
Could I finish with the handrail?
I know, it's coming.
Just for the record, though.
Just for the record.
Go ahead.
I was the one driving that bus.
I don't think you were, Mr. Knickie. I think you covered for someone.
I don't think that's true, because what really occurred was, once the bids went out and they were approved, and we awarded it to the contractor, the contractor seemed to have employee issues. I don't know for sure, but that's what it appears. As of last week, they were sending the piping to be galvanized, and then they were supposed to be installing it, hopefully, next week. The problem was, we were looking at the election date of the 8th, and we didn't want to have disruption on the sidewalk when the election was going on, the primary. So the plan is, it should be in by the middle of September. That's the plan at this point.
Not bad. 11 months.
It's not a year, but I will tell you this, I was also on spearheading the automated doors on this building. And if you took a look at that timeframe, you would see it took about the same amount of time between the bidding process and everything else.
I don't want to argue with you. And I'll just, I won't bore you with the rest of the night, but I approached you last year about the mess out here on the hill, and then you said you were going to get it taken care of. Wanted Randall to bring a load of stones so you could get the truck up there. Nothing's done.
The problem has been coordinating the logging company to get them out there. They don't look at this as a big enough job to move it forward.
Then we shouldn't have hired them.
My fault. My error.
Hello, Dan Pellegrini again. Quick question. My understanding is some boards have revolving funds. How do we get that bylaw changed? How do we get that put for vote? I'm looking to, I'm a little concerned that boards do not have to turn their revenues back into the town at the end of the year. They can keep that money and basically use it to come up with new bylaws or whatever else that fits in there.
I may be in error, but I will try to explain to you, as I understand it, there presently is two very busy revolving accounts. And they're not revolving accounts, they're enterprise accounts. I'm assuming that's what you're looking at.
My, and I may have the terminology wrong, my understanding is there's certain boards and accounts that do not have to turn the balance at the end of the year back to the town.
Those are enterprise accounts.
Okay.
And the enterprise accounts are like the Water Department and the Transfer Station.
What about Planning Board? What about Conservation Commission?
Those are revolving accounts.
Okay. So that is basically a lot of what I'm talking about, because what I'm concerned about as a citizen is I see my fees going up through the roof for applying for subdivisions, for consulting fees, i.e. Larry Smith, to figure out how to deny me a subdivision, and I have to pay for his time at $80 an hour. At the end of the day, this planning board gets this pot of money, and they do not have to give it back to the town. They can take that and invest in more consultants to come up with more regulations to help building in town. So my question is, I know this is in the bylaw, how as a citizen, do I have to go put a petition out there and get enough signatures to have this as a vote for the town? Because my understanding is this is a public decision. This is a town decision, and I would like to understand what the process is to bring this to the attention of the town, and...
It's my understanding, and I could be in error, but it's my understanding that all those revolving accounts are established at the annual town meeting by town meeting vote.
So you could vote it down at the annual town meeting?
So how do I get those boards to switch like the other boards where they have to turn their revenues back? I'm not looking to blow it up. I'm just saying, why are these select boards out there have the ability to keep their own money, and other boards, such as our departments, have to return their profits to the town?
The revolving accounts originally were established based on the statutes to take in the system and basically doing their jobs, and by not causing the taxpayers of the general population to be having to fund all those activities. That was the purpose of it. What is going on with reserve capital that's in those accounts? I don't know. Okay? But their charter, in a sense, or general statute, is that they're supposed to use that money in the performance of their responsibilities.
Understand, and what I'm starting to see, and I'm not accusing, what I'm starting to see is if you end up with a slush of money, and you have to use it, and one is a consultant, you end up spending money with a consultant who comes up with ideas on how to better regulate the town. And I would think with a town that is struggling financially, at least what we say we are, even if it's $2,000 that's left over from the planning board, that doesn't go into Larry Smith's pocket, that goes into the town's pocket and goes back to the bottom line of the town, and doesn't give the discretion of that planning board to go and spend that money. Because my understanding is they pretty much can vote what they want for the fees amongst themselves, so they can continue to raise that fee. And I'll give you an example. The subdivision cost me over $6,000 in filing fees. You do a couple of those a year, there's $20,000, $30,000 coming in on the planning board. Even if it's $500 at the end of the day, why do they not have to turn that back to the town?
I believe they do, but I could be wrong. Heather?
So Charlie, I think you already explained this pretty well. Revolving funds are set up for the operating expenses of a board, committee, commission, whatever it may be. These are usually user fees that go in. The revolving funds, again, Charlie, you are correct, get voted on annual town meeting. In the revolving funds themselves, in voting each of them, you also vote the purpose and who has the right to spend out of that account. So for instance, the Park Commission has one for, I believe it's fees collected for Lake Connet Park Pavilion. So that might be one right there, where all they can do is, it says what they can collect, fees for the use of the pavilion, and then it might say to care for the pavilion. You have the same thing with the planning board, where they can do expenses. Now, one thing that folks need to be aware of is we don't have a lot of staffing. So a lot of our stuff is run by volunteers, including the Planning Commission. One of the purposes of having a revolving account is so that they can seek the expertise, in this case, of a consultant, because we don't have a town planner. We don't have a town engineer like a lot of communities do, even ones that are slightly larger than us. So this is where we're able to operate and move forward. Charlie already touched on the fact as well that by doing these types of accounts, we're not spending the general taxpayers' money. If you're going to use the service, you're going to pay for the service, and that's how it balances out. So the fees are to cover whatever service it is, and in this case, they cover the consultant fees. And it's unfortunate if they're higher than they once were, but we once upon a time had a wonderful member on the planning board who did all the work in-house, which is John Furman. John Furman's not there anymore, and the board does not feel that they can make the expertise, or have the expertise in-house to be able to make the decision. So they consult out. I mean, Jim, I'm sure Jim could speak a little bit more about the planning board, because he has a lot more experience than I do.
Now, they don't have to spend all their money at the end of the year.
It's a revolving fund. So revolving fund, if it says we can collect up to $10,000, means we can spend up to $10,000. All comes within the same piece. It's one that rolls over.
Right, they just backfill it every year to get it to that dollar amount.
Yeah, but you have to say, so a town meeting, if they said, we're only going to allow this account to go up to $12,000, and we get to a point, it looks like it's going to go higher than $12,000, we have to go back to town meeting, because there's not enough power to, not enough authority allotted to go up to that number.
And I don't know any committees that go out and say, we've got $4,000 left, let's hire a consultant, just for the sake of spending the money. These volunteers, I think, have an idea of what the funds are worth.
Is the balance sheet public? Can we see where they spend their money?
All town records are public.
Okay, so we can request those, and we can see what the balance is at the end, and we can see where they spend it? Okay. And...
Mr. Pellegrini, I think you have in your hands, or you had earlier, the town report.
Yes, I just...
Annual town report does the breakdown of all of the lines. If you don't see the revolving accounts on there, you let me know, but all of our town finances should be spelled out in a calendar, or actually, no, that is a fiscal year, I believe, that we do on, so it is fiscal year, you'll see.
So I guess, and thank you for the explanation, it does make sense, but who designates whether an account is revolving or not, and why does it have to be set up that way? Why can't the fees just be put in, and if there's a balance at the end of the year, it goes back to the town? And if you need money, you ask the town for it.
The accounts are established at town meeting. In fact, most of these accounts have been historically just revoted on for years.
Correct, and there's no education, and that's where I'm getting a little concerned.
And they're basically based on statute relative to what that board or committee does. That statute allows them to have that, provided the town meeting approves it.
But I guess where we're failing the town is educating us, because you go up there in town meetings and you just read through it, and it's like a motion. With the electronics, with the free flow of communication, now we should be educating the town. And to me, it just does not seem right, going through the process, that I spent all this money, and I would rather see any net profit of that or positive of that go back to the town, or if it's truly being spent on better regulations and better stuff, then it shouldn't matter, because it's all going to zero out at the end of the year. So why would anyone fight against the profit going back into the town? Why wouldn't it be set up that way?
But again, the accounts can only go to a certain amount.
But how can you predict that? So you don't know who's going to come forward with a subdivision this year. So you're just wetting your finger and guessing what this account's going to go to. So it seems...
We have caps on the accounts.
But...
And they only spend what they need, and they have to document it, and it's all a public record.
It's all about the income I'm talking about. So where does that money come in? That comes in from contractors, from people applying for building permits. We really have no idea what that is going to be at the beginning of the year.
May I suggest you send a note over to the town accountant, pick one of the revolving accounts, and ask for a line item, public document, and just see what it looks like.
And I will, but I just want to understand the process to get it changed, too.
You know, and I don't disagree with you, a town meeting. So many things get voted on a town meeting that no one has a clue what they're voting on.
They're just waiting for the wrong agenda.
They almost obliterated the Water Department last year, because they didn't understand where that was going.
I agree.
You know?
And I don't think the citizens should have to pay for our, us builders, as we want to do subdivisions, but at the end of the year, I don't want a kitty of $10,000 for people to sit back, and I'm not accusing anyone, but it's human nature. If you've got the money, you've got to use it or lose it. I'm in the corporate USA. At the end of the year, the budget spend is amazing at big companies.
But they don't lose it, that's the thing.
But ours doesn't work like that.
They do at GE.
But not here, they don't lose it, it just gets filled back.
Understand, but if now, if you start having an account with $30,000, $20,000...
Well, that's where Heather just said, it can't go that high. If it starts to go higher, they have to go back to the town meeting and have it approved to increase it. They can't just build up as much as they want. There's a cap.
It promotes spending, or the other way of doing, before going to the town.
Or the town people need to listen and say, no.
Probably. And that's where, you know, whether it's, I just wanted to get clearly articulated in town, and if it's a majority in the town that says we're fine with it that way, then so be it. But I'm very concerned.
It's not the majority of the town, it's the majority of the town meeting. And that's a whole different...
That is a whole nother...
Yeah.
Understand.
Like Sharon says, if it's at $10,000, and they want $15,000, they've got to get up and explain why.
Understand, or if they're at $9,000, and they know someone's coming in with a $5,000 fee, what's the other way you can do it? Go spend $4,000 to make room for the $5,000 to come in?
No, it's only once a year. It gets filled up again. It's not every time they go down.
So every time I pay, when I have to pay a fee, that doesn't go into that bucket in the planning board?
It goes in that bucket, and then they draw from that for the expertise they need to do it.
They go over that.
Right.
So just think about it. So how do you control it going over? You either ask the town to increase that, or you go spend money and make sure it doesn't go over. And so when you go and spend money to make sure it doesn't go over, I'm in sales. People are just buying stuff to buy it. And that's where I'm getting concerned, as a taxpayer, seeing my mill rate going up every year, everyone complaining about services and not having money, but yet we've got potential here to really make builders such as myself, money go a little bit farther, not necessarily into a consultant's pocket, because our regulations are tight enough and we just rewrote them all, but bring some money back to the town.
All right, Mr. Pellegrini.
Okay.
All respect, I'm going to write this down, page 72 of the town report, town accountant, revolving accounts, that's where they're all listed, I'll let you have this, but just to give you an example, the planning board basically brought in, oh, let's see here, $20,704, okay, last year. Then they expended $4,079, so at the end of the year, they had a $16,000 budget.
It should go right back to the town. It's $16,000, right back to the town, why not?
That's where the ceiling is, they can't go above that, so that money goes back to the town.
So that money goes back to the town, is that what you're saying? No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Doesn't go back to...
Stays in the fund.
It stays in their fund for them to spend it.
But they can't go above, let's say the account's 20,000.
So there's 16,000, Charlie, there's 16,000 that could go back to the town right now, and then they aren't going to be in trouble next year, because all their fees are going to be paid for as people bring permits and apply. I mean, I do an A&R, I'm paying 100 and some odd dollars. So they are never going to be in the red. So we should take that positive and put it to the town's bottom line. There's no reason. And you know what? I stood up in the town hall and got chastised a little bit when the police were asking for a cruiser, and I said, "What are you going to do with the other cruiser?" And they said, "We're going to park it behind there." I found out, we never even canceled the insurance on that cruiser. So not only did we not trade the cruiser in, we left insurance on it. So, and this is what I'm looking at, is I'm watching my tax rate go up, and I'm writing $100,000 checks to put in sidewalks on Crooked Edge Road.
Okay, but let's not go into...
I know, I know.
Okay, but you have a valid point, I'm not disagreeing with you. Heather, would it be possible to take and get a statement out of the town accountant relative to this?
Revolving funds?
Yes.
Well, I can send Mr. Pellegrini the summary from Division of Local Services that actually summarizes it, that I was sitting here reading. So if he wants to pop me his email before he leaves...
I'll do that.
I can pop him this, and this does the explanation of revolving funds and non-school purposes, and then if he had specific questions on our specific revolving funds, he would want to contact Vicki directly.
Please copy me.
And does that show how to get it changed? Because it is not a board decision, is my understanding, it is a town charter decision.
It's a town, it's a town meeting.
And that is my question, it's not questioning the legality of it, where we are with it.
Do you wish to, Mr. Pellegrini?
I've got one right here, I've got one.
So what is it that you're asking, Mr. Pellegrini? You want to take it to town meeting and have it changed?
How do we educate the town? Do I do a petition? How do I get this out in front of the town?
Well, you can submit it as an article for a town meeting. A town meeting, if memory serves, all it needs is 10 signatures.
Okay.
Annual town meeting, not special.
And that's all, because if you look at three or four boards, and we can pick up 10, 15,000, there's 30, 40, 50,000. I mean...
I must be candid with you, I think you're going in the wrong direction, but with the right purpose.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, because we were saying that these people on the committees will go out and spend the money in order to get somebody else in. I mean, these are all volunteers out there, they're not there to spend the money erroneously, they're there to help the town and save the town money. So I don't want people out there to think that we don't trust the committee members, because we have such a hard time getting them now. That's, you know, so I think they do a great job, and they do their best, so I don't want to have that bad taste. But also, if you get rid of a revolving fund, you've got to have a budget line for those people, so you've got to fund the budget line. So you may get a one-time pop of a few dollars, but from that point on, you'll never have it again.
But with historical data, as far as budgeting, it should be fairly easy.
Right, that's that one-time pop you'll get. If they use 8,000 last year, next year you'll fund it for 8 instead of 20, so you'll gain 12. But, so it's a one-shot deal. I mean, you're in sales, I'm on the procurement side, so we do this every day, and we all have different sides to this.
No, it does, and I guess where it would really benefit the town is if we do continue to grow. And we continue to put in subdivisions, because it would be much more than 8,000 coming in. I mean, you put in two or three subdivisions, you've got $20,000 right there, $30,000 coming in, never mind the inspection fees and all the other stuff that come in. And I agree, and I'm not, and I, thank you for bringing that up, I am not shining any light that there's wrongdoing, but at the end of the day, I'm just looking for any dollar we can put back into this town, because we seem to be struggling.
I think the way Charlie described was right, you're looking for the right reason.
Yes, absolutely.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. And Heather, I'll send you my email address.
I'm just wondering if you're going to get up there or not, Red. You all sat?
Red.
Okay, then I'm closing public discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Red.
Thanks, everybody. That was one of the better discussions we've had in a while. I thought it was very good, you know? All right, we don't have any appointments scheduled, so I guess we're moving right into the town administrator's report. I've got to push this...
Hi, so I'm going to be brief tonight, I don't have a lot, and I think I just reported last week, and you're going to get to hear from me the next three weeks in a row, which is just so exciting. So very quickly, just the major thing I need to tell you about, we talked about this at previous meetings, the Mass Works grant. At a previous meeting, Charlie had informed you all that he had sat down for a meeting with Randall and the consultant, they talked about the East Street Bridge. One of the things we had discussed was seeking a Mass Works grant for funding to repair the East Street Bridge, therefore taking that portion off of the tip, off of the rest of the East Street project that keeps getting pushed back, we believe likely because of the large bridge piece. We have a meeting coming up with Representative Kokot on the 12th, and we'll be talking about the East Street Bridge, along with other things that are on the CIP, which is the state's capital improvement. I don't know if it's plan or project, I can't tell you, I know it's one of those words, though. But going back to the Mass Works grant, so the board at one point had voted to authorize Charlie to sign to move forward with getting a consultant for the Mass Works grant. In other words, a consultant to prepare the application. Application has a very quick turnaround, we started very late in the process. The application for this process, or project, is actually due September 2nd, so we are moving at a frantic pace at this moment. Last week, Randall and I met, Charlie chimed in, I think we had a couple other people as well, and we came up with a list of folks to reach out to for letters of support. Consultants got back to us late that they needed letters of support to move forward with this project. We've reached out to neighboring cities, towns, organizations, cyclist organizations, the Greenway, you name it, we've pretty much reached out to it. If we haven't, and someone hears this at home, and you think you have anything to add or could support this project, please feel free to contact me ASAP on this piece. We're accepting emails rather frequently, we have a handful of them so far. What's going to happen with this project and moving forward with the grant is the substantial sum of money that the state is, would be awarding us if we were able to get a Mass Works grant on this piece. And we would have to pony up a little bit of funding as well. Luckily, we can use Chapter 90 funds to do so. The amount that they'd be looking for us to contribute would be around 160,000. Now, that's a lot of money, that's actually 2/3 of what we annually get, for the most part, from Chapter 90 allocations from the state. So although we might have a little reserve for now, because we haven't tapped heavily into our Chapter 90 funds over the past couple of years, this would theoretically wipe out 2/3 of a one-year's allocation of Chapter 90 funds. And that's a serious amount of money, 160,000 to put forward, and that would be for consultant fees, engineering studies, and so forth. So it's very important that the board both understand that concept of 160,000, also is aware and still wants to move forward with this piece, knowing that moving forward, we will be applying to Chapter 90 for 160,000 for this piece. If we move forward with the Mass Works grant, we will also need to get started on the first piece right away, which is 20,000 of the 160, to move forward, beginning with the consultant fees and so forth. If you remember, the previous cost for the consultant just to do the grant for us was about 4K and some change. So all in all, by the end of the day, when we finish this project, we'll be looking at about 160-something thousand that we're contributing to the East Street Bridge. Now, we've talked about this numerous times, it's a very, most find it a very important project to move forward with for the infrastructure. It's very important, it would make East Street a lot safer when we do continue the construction of East Street itself, and that does get worked on with state funds on that piece, and we're able to, you know, link people from the center of town over to the park, the fields, Conant Park, the library, without people getting killed on the East Street Bridge would probably be phenomenal, I would imagine. At this point, I'm before you tonight for two reasons. Number one, again, to notify you and make sure the board is in support of going forward with applying to Chapter 90 funds in the amount of 160,000 to move forward on the Mass Works grant. And number two, to get, have the select board, through Charlie, actually sign a letter of support on behalf of the town to move forward with this application.
To spend 160,000?
Well, they can, they're two separate things, so 160,000 and support, signature of a letter.
So are we positive we're going to get this grant, we're going to go spend in the 160,000, and then we could not get the grant?
We wouldn't spend 160 unless we got the grant. And let me back up a little bit. We just authorized two months ago, a lot of Chapter 90 money to be spent on other roads. There's about 10 to 12 roads that are being resurfaced, re-conditions, and everything else. They're either going to be done this fall or next spring. So the large chunk, what was it, $890,000 of Chapter 90 money that we have in reserve is being used in the coming year. This 160 is like next year's money coming in?
2/3 of it.
Right. And the way I've been looking at it is, this bridge is a priority, because it's the linchpin throughout the whole section there. If we're already moving the other money to take care of roads in need, and they're already paid for through that Chapter 90 money, okay, so we're going to take this money next year, that's our priority project. So...
And what's the alternative if we don't do that? We widen the road down the road, and it goes to...
You may never see East Street actually get on the tip.
So that may kibosh that, which doesn't make sense, obviously.
So how much are we going to have to spend? At what point in that 160,000, do we find out? I mean, are we going to be halfway through it, quarter-way through it, before you think we'll find out about the grant?
My understanding is, we're not spending any of it until...
Oh, so we wouldn't spend anything until we know we got the grant?
We're just essentially saying, when we apply for the grant, that we're committing, we're committed to applying for 160,000 of our Chapter 90 funds to go towards this project.
If you give it to us, we will commit this.
Very good.
Yes, and in anticipation of even applying, we need to initially apply for the 20,000 of it for the consultant fees, to have that up and running, so that we would have it, should we be approved for the grant, but it wouldn't be spent unless we're approved for the grant.
Very good.
The only lost money is if we apply for the grant, having the consultant, and we don't get the grant. That $4,000 that we paid the consultant to do the work is lost revenue.
But that's worth the risk.
That's, for a $1.5 million project, to put four grand ahead to do the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just about everybody in town uses that, East Street.
Yeah, either option, or we can put a toll booth up, and I don't know.
Getting rid of toll booths now.
No toll booth? There'd be extra ones that we'd be able to...
So what is it?
Need a motion?
I think it would be helpful to have some kind of motion from the board, just so we have a record that the board is aware that 160,000 in Chapter 90 fund would need to be allocated and appropriated for the purposes of the Mass Works grant of the rehab of East Street Bridge.
So the motion would be, just, I'm talking out loud here, that we, the board votes to allocate 160,000 of Chapter 90 money if our grant application is approved? Would that work?
That works.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And then the second piece is to have the board support Charlie signing a letter in support of the Mass Works application that we're filing for the East Street Bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to support Charlie and you with the application process.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous.
That's all I have tonight, unless there's any questions.
This is scaring me, the board's voting unanimously right now.
This is what happens when you're usually not here.
Is that what happens?
Yeah.
I heard that, it's better when I'm not here.
John Martin just rolls right through it.
And we would have been out by now.
I see the love here, I really do. Okay, that said, select board updates, liaisons.
Fire chief's on vacation, so I haven't talked to him lately.
Do you do liaison for highway?
Yeah, I haven't, that way.
Okay, just curious.
Should have given a call.
He does too big. Nothing since last week.
All right. Public Safety Committee did meet about a week ago or so, that I, I don't remember if I gave you...
I talked about that, but...
Basically, what it's come down to now is, we're going to have a meeting with the consultant to look at revisions of the plan. My hope is to see if I can get Mr. Labrie to join me to meet with that, some daytime schedule, and just brainstorm, just to start getting that process going.
Who are you talking about?
Public Safety Building Committee.
Safety?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you said meet during the day, so it's real me?
No, Mr. Labrie.
Oh, okay.
I thought Mr. Labrie would like to sit in on it, because you're in at the meetings at night.
Yeah.
And he can meet with Kayla Kabenik, with myself, and sort of think about how we can reduce the cost of that project before we get into the committee, starting to put together the nuts and bolts in this. Does that make sense? But that's going to be a slow process for right now, because everyone's on vacations, it's tough to get anybody lined up. Jackie?
Before you get off of that, we still are looking for members for that.
We are still looking for members. We need to have people write letters to, basically, the town administrator, asking to be appointed to that committee.
Or an email.
Or an email.
A builder would be nice.
Smoke signals would be great, even at this point.
Anything? Puzzles at the window?
But seriously, Jackie's suggestion is good, I mean, we should, we'd have brought up, some builder in town, or multiple ones would be great, because they may have some ideas on how we can make it more economical, but yet very usable.
Exactly. Do you have anything?
Negative.
Okay. I had talked to Nilda, well, not this week, but she said she's going to have a meeting in September for the zoning board, and also Virginia Ahart is here from the CPC, if she has anything she wants to add.
Jackie, it's our liaison to community preservation. We're in a holding pattern.
So, you mean preservation's in a holding pattern?
Right, she has a lot of stuff going on, but it hasn't come to fruition yet, but it's getting there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, you want to move into policies and regulations? We have, sitting here for review, the current policy of special municipal employee designation, alcohol hours, emergency weather, free cash, hearing before the select board, meal reimbursement policy, procedures for dog hearings, purchase orders. We've had time to review these, haven't had any feedback from anybody, either way, negative or positive, so I'd entertain a motion to accept and move forward.
Well, these are current ones, we're just revoting back in?
Yep.
They're not new, they're current ones we've been using, but due to our new policy that we voted in, we vote these every year now.
We vote these every year, and the reason we do that is because there's been past Boards of Selectmen years ago that would adopt the policy, and people thought that that policy was forever, and things change, circumstances change, so we revote every year.
And plus, it brings it back up again, so people know there's policies out there.
Right. If you notice, I did not read the new policy regulations considering, I just read the old ones.
Right.
So that's where I'd like to see a motion.
So my question, did everybody already review these, again?
I'm sorry?
Did everybody already review these?
Yes. Yeah, they've been on the table for, well, they've been on the table for a number of years, but, you know.
I know, just asking.
Yes, I did. Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we approve the policies that Charlie just read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
Too late.
All right, all vote, okay. So those are all accepted as published. Now we go into the new policies. We've tabled the driveway regulations, so the only other new policy is fuel efficiency policy. This relates to the green community designation. We've had discussion on this. Basically, we're a green community, we need to adopt this policy so that we become eligible for grant money as this moves forward.
One piece you don't see with us, which I'll get approval from the board next week, is simply just the current vehicles we have. None of them, as far as I know, will be exempt, or non-exempt, all of them will be exempt from the rules. I don't currently drive around in a town car. Most of us don't do that, it's usually police, fire, highway that have the vehicle, so they're all on the exempt side, as far as I understand it.
So even the police cruisers?
Yeah, because they're used for emergency vehicles. There's certain exceptions here. The only piece we need to do is we're finishing with the insurance to make sure we have the correct list of all the vehicles we have, and then the one other piece we have to put is miles per gallon and four-wheel, two-wheel, which is additional information from what we currently have in our database. So soon as we have that, we'll put it back before the board in a week or so to add that piece to the current policy, and then that will be another part of it that's updated annually.
Motion to move forward?
I'll make the motion.
Wait here a second.
Are we just talking about...
Fuel efficiency policy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. All right, discussion need for a Select Board liaison to both school committees. School Department is probably the lion's share of the budget for the town, and we do not have a liaison from this board to the school department. We really should have a liaison to the school.
Agreed. It's critical, especially Hampshire Regional.
Yeah, I want to know when they meet.
I think they meet once a month.
Once a month?
Which group are you talking about?
School committees.
So Norris meets, I believe, once a month, I believe Hampshire does as well, but they likely have subcommittees, but I mean, you wouldn't necessarily need to go to the subcommittee piece, 'cause you're just reporting back, and Smith Vocational is not that frequent that I know of, but that is a huge portion of our spending, so it might be helpful to have someone paying attention to those meetings.
So the liaison goes to Norris, Hampshire, and Smith?
Well, you can have three different people, you don't necessarily need the same one. I think the whole point in Virginia's comment, I think, which was very well made in the past, was the fact that it is, it would be essential, essential to the town and the school moving forward, that the town become aware of what's going on in the school, and the school become aware of what's going in the town. One of the reasons Virginia shows up to these meetings, so that she can keep the school committee apprised of what's happening. There's a huge divide between the school and the town, as we've seen over the years, where, you know, it's kind of fighting back and forth, so to speak, over funds, over monies, and folks aren't really understanding either side of the equation of what's happening.
Virginia?
Yeah, I think the Norris School is our, would be your first concern, mainly because when you look at the regional, you are now talking, actually, five other towns now, because Worthington is a player in this. Smith School has trustees. They're not a part of the North Hampton picture. I have no idea when they meet or anything, but it's a board of trustees for Smith, but if you can only rustle up one, the Norris School should be your first, because it needs, this especially, needs to be a two-way street. And I've been in this town more years than I want to think, and there's never been a kind of give and take between the town and the school that you find in many of the other communities. And part of that is, they don't know what you're thinking, and you don't know what they're thinking, so, but I would say, if you can only find one to begin with, concentrate on the Norris.
Virginia, when do they meet?
I think it's the last Wednesday of the month.
All right, I'll do Norris.
You'll do Norris?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Seriously, thank you.
One thing, Virginia, I'm not gonna disagree with you, but I think Hampshire Regional is critical too, because we have, the only, the only say we have really is somebody being on that school committee, 'cause the other four towns vote us down a lot, so unless we have somebody on that school committee that can talk to those folks and try to get in their ear as to what's going on here, so I don't want to disagree with you, but I think that's critical too.
Yeah, it's, the reason I said that is simply because you are working now with, financially with four others. Policy-wise, now with five other towns.
So I think if we can talk to them about changing some policies, that'll help everybody. So I think they're both equal, I guess, is what I was...
Yeah, and they need to hear you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You have to go back in the history, and I'm sorry, but Southampton has a black eye with that school committee. I can remember sitting in town meeting after town meeting, annual town meeting, and the finance committee comes in with a balanced budget, with a cut in Hampshire, and the four towns have already passed it. And they know what we're doing, and they know then the finance committee's gonna have to come back and cut from other lines. I really wanted to get up and say, "Come on, town, look at what they're doing," because there was no communication. And we were sued once to get our share by that committee, and they see us as, yeah, we've got the most kids up there, but they also see us as the negative, non-progressive group, and I think we really need to work on that, and you're right, we need somebody up there too. Even if they just smile at the other towns and never say a thing.
You know, that won't happen.
Let them, yeah, let them know that we're here.
Yeah.
And that we're hearing them, and that whoever the person is, is willing to bring things back. Smith with the trustees, it's a different, it's a different scene, I don't know enough about that to know how you would handle that, because they aren't even a part of the North Hampton Committee.
Thank you, Virginia. Well, I heard a voice saying that she was willing. Do I hear a motion to appoint as liaison?
To Norris? And Hampshire and Smith? I'll make that motion. Oh, that's not what you said? Okay, to... To Norris? If we need a motion, I'll make the motion to accept Shannon's...
As liaison to the Norris School? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations on your new appointment. Pack your seatbags and away you go.
Right?
Yeah, it comes with a doubling of the pay, so...
Yes.
Fantastic. Now you're in sick time?
And all those benefits. Don't give her too much at one time, she's having enough fun with one. Yeah, ease her into it. All right, we're into new business now?
We gotta talk about Hampshire liaison? I know.
I would like to, but I honestly feel that I, I see we made major progress right now, so it's sort of think we put Hampshire on the side for the next meeting.
But don't you ride on the crest? That's the way I look at things.
Do I look like a surfer to you?
You look like a dude.
Yeah, I'm on the beach, man.
All right, let's keep moving here.
So what do you want to do, you wanna talk about regional?
Well, is anybody interested, I mean, we're here. Is anybody interested in being on there? Can we shift things around, get somebody in? I don't know. But, you know, Virginia made a good point there, but the point you made about that budget back when, years ago, that was the, that was the finance committee saying to Hampshire Regional, "You're not taking any cuts, we need to, you need to share in the cut," and it was a matter of doing it for the publicity of putting that out there.
Okay, but I don't want to get into the debate of why things happened the way they were, Virginia. We got, we got on the table here, do we want, do we have somebody for liaison for regional?
How often does that meet?
I was just asking about it.
I think about once a month. They have subcommittees, but...
You have subcommittees.
I wouldn't worry about those.
Can we share that position, if nobody's gonna raise their hand high?
Well, I think, I think the point is, it's just important to have Southampton represented.
Absolutely.
I know, I had made a few meetings a couple, probably about a year or so ago, when, during the budget season, and then what happens is I end up, I can't, I can't be in 16 places at once, I don't know how to do that yet, I'm still working on it. But, in the meantime, I think it would be very helpful, I mean, they did recognize me when I was there, I was able to put input, and I think we put a little pressure on the school, the committee, but one of the biggest problems is we have representation that's there, and I believe they have a weighted vote at the table of the school committee.
Yeah.
But as you guys said it before, once it gets to town meeting, it's equal vote.
Right.
So if we don't get the weighed in on that side...
So can you find out when Hampshire and Smith meet?
I don't think you need to go towards Smith, but I would go towards the regional. I don't think you need to go towards Smith, 'cause the activity is less, but the regional's a must.
That's important, yeah.
What's our total enrollment roughly at Smith?
Fifty-five percent, if that means anything, roughly.
Smith?
No, enrollment, how many, yeah, how many kids at Smith? I'm talking Smith.
Okay, I wasn't...
I think it's fairly small, right?
Twenty-five, thirty, but...
Yeah, so...
Over thirty kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of kids at Smith compared to Hampshire.
Hampshire Regional on the other hand...
Hampshire Regional, we're talking about Smith there.
Yeah, Hampshire Regional's a must. Norris in the...
Smith is in the forties.
It's a share.
So, but again, if we gotta pick priorities...
I think Hampshire would be much...
Yeah. John, you said you were gonna do it. Shannon, you wanna appoint you to that? Take it as it goes?
I just don't wanna say yes and I can't make it, you know what I mean?
I'm working on it, give me a moment.
That's why, I just wanna know what days and whatever. Unless I just drop all my kids off at your house while I go.
That's been known to happen.
I know. Leave them all in the barn.
They all go to the barn. They're looking at the security cameras going, "Where'd all these kids come from?"
Who are these people?
Should be on the calendar, yeah. Town calendar.
All right, wanna move...
Let's revisit that, how about that?
All right, let's, let's see if we can revisit it by the end of the meeting, then we'll just move into the next discussion, which is new business. And the first thing on the agenda is special town meeting, October 18th. First thing is salary increases.
Do you want me to go over these things, Charlie? Would that be helpful?
I, yes, would you please?
Sure, so basically what I just did for the board, I wanted to outline where we're looking at for items that potentially could be articles on the town meeting, just wanted to review with you so you know what's coming up, and also to let me know if there's anything you foresee that I have not anticipated, so that we can start working on articles for those items. The first piece is salary increases, which is a lot of stuff for executive session tonight, but essentially, we do have at least one contract that was negotiated, which was the police chief's contract, that a salary increase is likely to be anticipated as an article on the town meeting warrant, and potentially others. The next subject down you have is capital, and the reason we put it in capital is because these were originally capital improvement projects, so I am working on getting ahold of Margaret Larson and getting the Capital Improvement Committee and seeing if they have an opportunity to meet prior to the closing of the warrant at the middle of September, so the two items on here, the HVAC library piece, which I know we had talked about previously, John, and you were asking about getting those numbers, which we are in the process of trying to do, but it has not gone out to bid yet, we've been having trouble getting our consultant to call us back, so I will be personally making a phone call when we conclude this meeting to leave a nice voicemail for them, so they're ready to anticipate my responses tomorrow morning.
We haven't paid them yet, have we?
I don't believe we have. Then the second item under capital is the MHQ purchase, so what, what this is, and I am open to any suggestions to the board of how to avoid this mishap from last year going forward, so this was an FY16 purchase of the police car, police car was purchased fine, but there were additional items included inside the car, which were accessories. We had gone forward, we had done a procurement order, everything was good to roll, we got the items, but unfortunately MHQ never sent the bill, there was a lot of confusion, apparently someone at MHQ a few months ago said, "Oh, no, no, you have no outstanding balance, what have you," but we never closed, we never actually used the purchase order, but there was confusion, and then the end of the day, the procurement order was liquid, liquefied, and the funds were then spent on something else for the police car, so ultimately, at the end of the day, we do have an outstanding bill from MHQ in the amount of $11,000, give or take, and some change, for items inside the police car, which again, we did get, but unfortunately, there was a bunch of confusion, and one thing led to another, so to speak, and we never actually closed out on that bill piece, so now we have a balance on it, and it was recommended by the accountant to go back to capital for that additional funding to pay that outstanding balance, because it was originally a capital purchase. This year, luckily, in FY17, we've had no such problems on that, and everything seems to be going smooth.
So when you liquidated the purchase order, there was $11,000 that went where?
So what happens is I put through a procurement order, and then, once I approve the procurement order on my end, it goes up to the accountant's office.
Right.
So I, at that point, I have nothing else to do with the procurement order, it is then managed by the accountant's office.
So it went out...
So when you liquefy, essentially, it makes the procurement order disappear, and the money returns to the account, so when you go to look at the account, so for instance, me, as procurement order go, procurement officer goes to look at the account, says, "Oh, you need a laptop, oh, we have money for that," 'cause the account shows funds.
Which account did it go to?
It was the one that was specifically allocated for the purchase of the police cruiser at the prior town meeting.
So who spent the money? The police department spent it?
So the police department spent it on other items for the cruiser, being confused as to what was paid for, what wasn't paid for.
So they, they didn't know they had $11,000 more in their budget than they did?
So remember, the procurement order was processed, correct?
Right.
So you have a procurement order for something, they ordered the parts, the parts came in, they never got a bill. They called, they said there was no bill, although they knew they had the procurement order in hand, something, things fell through the cracks, let's say.
But if I, if I look at my expense report or revenue report for the month, and I have $11,000 more than I think I should, I'm not gonna go spend it, I'm gonna ask the question, "Where did this come from?" It sounds like that question wasn't asked, and they had an advantage of $11,000, correct?
I...
Whoever made the, whatever you wanna call it, they, they spent $11,000 more than was appropriated, and now we owe $11,000.
Correct.
Okay. So personally, I think it should come from police budget. And everybody looks down when I say that, but I mean, if you're, if you're managing your budget, you've gotta manage it right. And if I mismanaged $11,000 in my budget, I gotta tell ya, people wouldn't be happy, and I know it's there. I mean, we, do we finally, do we have to say at this point, "Hey, it was a mistake, but you should've managed your budget properly," and I don't know who that somebody is, who took over at what point, but I think it's up to the police department now to come up with that.
Well, I'm still trying to digest the word liquefy.
Liquidate, I think.
Liquidate, yeah, yeah, sorry.
They tore up the P.O.
Okay.
And the town accountant said...
This encumbered the funds, that's probably... Money was put back.
Yeah. Well, either way, we're gonna have to approach this to make sure the bill's paid.
Am I moving on?
And now it's last year's bill.
Yes.
Which is gonna take a nine-tenth vote.
I'll go with a yes, it depends on which town meeting it is when you go to vote it as to the, so I, I always like to look those up before I...
Hey, I'm an expert at nothing here, you know that. I'm just throwing things out and seeing if I get an answer.
Oh, okay. Perhaps.
Maybe.
We'll double-check that one, just to be on the safe side. So additional items here for moving on, line item transfers, technology, we're just gonna move money from the equipment to the services side, we expanded our carbonite storage recently, so that we have, I believe it is now 1,000 gigabytes of storage, before we had 500 gigabytes of offsite, and we were down to, I think, about 2 gigabytes left, so we were unable to do a full backup, now we're good to go. We renewed for New Year, and we've also bought most of the, if not everything, we've anticipated at least for our technology equipment, so the rest of it, we'd like to put in the service line, so we have it to continue maintaining, fixing problems as they come and so forth. Police uniforms, I talked to the police chief on this piece, it is an item that is very specific to our contract, our union contract. We had talked about transferring from the expense line to a separate line just for police uniforms, so it's much easier to manage, it's much easier to budget, there's some other things there, but we can chat about that in collective bargaining conversation, but that is one of the items we're looking at. The other item is just line item transfers, we never seem to get it right with our insurance, so there's always one item that's higher than the other item, and it's always just moving from workman's comp to general and so forth. Yes, sir.
Are we also looking at insurance relative to sick time issue?
I, no, that wouldn't be a line item transfer, though, that would probably be like operating expense, but we can, I will, I will note that.
I don't see it here, that's why I'm...
I will note that. Insurance, sick, okay. Other things I have here for operating, photocopy paper, that one, remember, we signed the contract after we had already essentially gone to town meeting, and it ended up coming up a little bit more, 'cause they paid off the lease for the prior copier, so we will need to allocate a little bit of funds for that, not anything too extensive, just enough to cover paper, and I think it's a hundred dollars or so off on the actual contract piece. The last one I have... Um, the last one I have here is, um, we've talked about this in, before, I generally like doing this, just because I find it easier to change things in mid-year, as opposed to wait until annual town meeting and change many things. Uh, this would be the concept of adding an administrative assistant person to either the police department or the fire, or both, but I think this would be a great time, whether it be October or January, to demo this piece, so we can, you know, get an idea of what we're really looking for, and also get something up and running in the budget, yes.
I had a long conversation with the police chief about this, he's pleading with us to please fund some type of administrative aid. He's looking at ten, twelve hours a week, just to get it to the point where he can actually go out and do other things, other than just administrative stuff. I hear him, uh, I think we should try to put this on for October, I don't know where we're going to go with it, but I think we should. I'm talking to police chief.
Also, I, I don't see on here anywhere, are we doing anything with standby, that issue was coming up at the end of the year, because we only had enough money to end of the year.
I don't know.
That's on the fireside, though.
I know, I haven't seen it here, that's all, I didn't know if we were going to address that.
Did we get any?
I'm looking to the board for direction, if they wish for me to pursue and.
I would pursue this because we were supposed to anyway, so put it on there, it's on the list, even if it ends up just being a placeholder at this point.
And do you have anything more specific, Jim, of what you're looking for when you say standby?
Well, we voted to increase the standby pay for complete coverage from five o'clock to eight o'clock, and we went from fifty to a hundred dollars, remember, we did that earlier?
Yeah.
So you're looking to fund that?
We had the money in the account that was going to end, at the end of this year, because it went from fifty to a hundred dollars.
So you're looking to see what we would need for funding and where we could possibly take it from for January through June?
Yes, we may as well, uh, face that now.
As, as I remember it, we had seventy-five thousand dollars in there for a full year, and that was for the, without the increased stipend on there, and because it was almost doubled, we're going to use the entire seventy-five thousand dollars by the end of December, so we're going to need, I think, another seventy-five thousand dollars to go through the end of June, because the total package was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which funded the second shift.
For some reason, I, I thought it was, seventy-five was the high number, I thought we had halfway there, I think it was in the thirties, if I'm, thirty-five thousand-ish.
Well, half, I thought it was for, but again.
That's, that's the reason of bringing it up, and the other part was.
Right, we'll, we'll do the math, I believe it's thirty-five thousand, in that neck of the woods.
I'll work with Vicki and the fire chief on that, we can figure out the right numbers.
And the other part was the ambulance revenue was coming in, we were hoping that was going to help offset some of the, this and that, we weren't taking out any other accounts.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there any other items that should be, I know there's going to likely be CPC stuff, but Virginia can only move so fast.
We're also discussing the possibility of changing the bylaws relative to noncriminal ticketing, uh, and adopting that bylaw, and we're also looking at the police department redrafting some of those bylaws for, Jackie, you're giving me this, look, what? The zip the barn? Let's finish with the noncriminal ticketing, then we'll talk about the zip the barn. Uh, the noncriminal ticketing, the police department's basically bound right now to issue tickets based on state statutes. Noncriminal ticketing would reduce the fines and make it more tolerable for the police department to issue speeding tickets, and because they're noncriminal, the fees would be paid directly to the town, and so if, they don't want to give a, a sledgehammer approach to where somebody needs a slap on the wrist and told, don't do this again.
So a traffic, or speeding ticket would not go as a criminal?
That's right, noncriminal ticketing doesn't go into criminal unless the fact that no one pays the ticket.
Does it go to your insurance company?
No.
Okay, well, I like that idea.
It's a, it's a very gentle approach to saying, okay, here's a fifty dollar ticket for speeding, don't do it again, pay the ticket at the town hall, and all is forgiven.
If they don't pay, it goes to?
If they don't pay the ticket, then the town can take and bring them to the clerk magistrate and bring it criminally. If they don't pay the ticket and we work out this bylaw, what will happen is, is the town will have an option of basically attaching it on their property tax, if they own property in town.
Yeah.
So there'll be two vehicles, and if we do it in the sense of noncriminal ticketing, they don't pay the fine, and we attach it through their taxes, then we don't have to go to court, we don't tie up anybody in court or anything like that.
Yeah.
That's the quick overview, that's, that's, there's a lot more to this.
Technically, we can do that, the police department could do that for all speeding tickets.
We have to adopt a bylaw specific to the noncriminal ticketing, uh, and that's not just the police department, you could take your building department, and you could do that with the building inspector and his general statutes, you could also do that with your board of health. You know, it, it's pretty wide open as to where you want to go with this, I know that the, uh, building inspector, the health department, the police department, all have expressed interest to me about this. I've worked on this type of material before, so it's not uncommon, it's actually something the larger communities do, because it's, it's gentler enforcement, if there is such a thing.
Oh, there is.
But, well, I mean, right now, they're going with the general statutes, which are sledgehammer approaches to things.
Now, I agree, that, it's a great way.
All right. Charlie, can I just back up a little bit on the standby, I just did a little math here?
Yeah.
It comes to seventy-three thousand annually, we are already funded for thirty-six-five, so it's thirty-six thousand five hundred is what we're going to be needing to go to the second half of next year. This was when we talked to the, the fire chief about, um, they weren't getting good response with people on standby at night, so they had to up the ante a little, and our coverage is much better now, and it's just for standby, not at the station, but, uh, that's what we talked about.
No, I, I think your point's well taken, and I think if we put this on there for town meeting, it moves us forward towards that, so, yeah. Uh, all right, anything else?
Just the bylaw on the hydrants.
Oh, yes, there's also a proposal from the water department to have a bylaw that doesn't allow people to tap, to tap the hydrants, because we've had people trying to tap the hydrants and get free water for things like watering yards, gardening.
Really?
And fill swimming, swimming pools, and all the rest of that, so we need something with a fine attached to it as a bylaw.
It's not going to stop from getting a permit to fill the swimming pool from a hydrant?
No, no.
This is just illegally tapping?
This, this is when somebody shows up with their pumper truck, and just says, well, look at, there's a hydrant there on Valley Road that nobody sees, so I can park there and just pump up, and we need something to take and enforce that.
Makes sense.
You know? What are you laughing about? You don't want me to use Valley Road?
I know people have.
I, I paint that hydrant, man.
I know you do.
I've known it.
Exactly. That's the hydrant I would bring outside.
She caught me down on the road painting the hydrants one day, she said, what are you doing, I said, I became selectman, they gave me a brush and a broom, so I took the brush.
All right, what we're going to do.
All right. Uh, so anything else on town meeting?
We, we have time, I think I want to try to get everyone's, um.
Okay.
Articles in by September fifteenth, give or take, so it gives me a couple of days to get things wrapped up, and to town council, vet, and so forth.
Uh, review of current policies, buy recycled policy, is this the first reading of this?
Uh, this is, this is a, um, this is a policy that we had on file previously, um, you'll actually see in your packet, I've typed it up, so it's in twenty-first century, uh, typed on the computer, as opposed to nineteen ninety-eight's version on the typewriter, which I photocopied for you. Um, you guys did, uh, vote to keep this in play previously, but I thought it might be nice if we actually read it, and give it maybe ten days to make sure it legitimately is still up to par, because it refers to things, you know, in nineteen ninety-eight, so, thought it might be helpful to make sure that these pieces are all up to date. Uh, this is an important policy for us, because this is something we're required to have, uh, in order for Randall to apply for a certain grant we get every year for the transfer station. Uh, every year, you'll remember, we've been approving a letter saying that we have this policy on file, um, and this is the policy they're referring to, so I put this before the board, in hopes that the board will put this on file for ten days, and then come back to it, and make any amendments, modifications, and reapprove.
So this was done on December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-eight?
You remember it, right?
I was probably part of it somewhere.
Okay, just checking.
It's just, these memories are scary. Seeing you have it available, do you wish to read it out loud, so it's part of the record, or do you think just as it is in print, it's okay?
Um, it is totally up to the board if they wish me to read it into the record, otherwise, I'm happy to do what we've done with the past ones, we will get it up on the website tomorrow, it will go at the clerk's office, available for reviewing, um, and we will put on, if the board so chooses, put it on file for ten days, and pick it up in a couple of weeks.
Move to do it?
I'd move to put it up on the webpage.
Done. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, signatures appointment, personnel. We have an application for Cindy Lucier, library substitute, increase in pay. We have a Barbara Thompson, library substitute, increase in pay, and Gloria Golinski, library substitute, increase in pay. Any questions?
Is it in the budget? It's been signed off on?
That's, I just got the paperwork, as you just saw, my suspicions are it's been signed off by, uh. Finance committee has signed off on?
Did you skip over something here? The, the emergency?
Yes.
Okay, purposely skipped.
I put that on, I was wondering if, if Jackie was coming back, because she left her stuff, so I was trying to.
Okay, just, okay.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to give her the courtesy of being in on that. Uh, so I see finance signature on one.
It says all three have been signed off by FinCom and PPPB.
Yeah, so they're all approved. Entertained a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Done. Uh, let's see. I was waiting for Jackie, I wanted her to be part of that. Okay, as the board's aware of, our town clerk, uh, had a illness and is out of work presently, so we need to appoint somebody as a temporary town clerk. The select board would like to take and, uh, basically, uh, appoint Ellen Kuchar to this position.
I think Lucy was going to be the assistant, or the town clerk, isn't Eileen going to just be the, uh, assistant to the town clerk?
It's my, it's my understanding that Lucy felt Eileen was better suited for this.
Okay.
And at least that's what I was led to believe, and so that's where we're at for this.
Very good.
Uh, the select board, uh, pleased to inform her that she's been appointed under chapter forty-one, section fourteen, to the above referred office until further notice, or until the town clerk is able to return to full duties. If, uh, she chooses to accept this, she needs to be sworn in by the moderator, I left a message on the moderator's phone today to let him know this was going on, haven't gotten a call back, uh, and I left him my cell phone number, so he could get ahold of me directly. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Eileen Kuchar, who was town clerk, by the way, for those that don't know this, um, um, basically to act in this position as temporary town clerk, as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No oppositions, given this type of an appointment, we need signatures from each board member. Uh, next issue is personal requisition form, none?
Did you finish the PCF, you read them, did we vote?
Yeah, we voted on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jen, did you take?
Jen has changed to Heather, but, um, give me one second, let me check her notes here. Uh, looks like a motion to approve by LeBree, seconded by color four to zero.
Okay.
John dozed off at that second, I guess, anyways. All right. Disclosure of potential conflict of interest relative to Randall Kemp for twenty-seven Hillside Meadows, thirty Helen Drive, sixty-one Coleman Road, sixty-three Coleman Road. Uh, this is a standard form that's signed by the board authorizing him, understanding the fact that there's, in a small town, there's always conflicts of interest that roll back and forth, so do I hear a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Well, uh, I read them all, and I don't, I don't think there's anything substantial, substantial there.
This is just standard.
Yeah.
Trip cuts, and, uh, so.
All right, so we got a vote approval?
Aye. To vote, aye.
No upstaged, so motion carried? I lost track that time. Uh, license and permit application for Autumn Zorzynsk.
Zurozak.
Zurozak, for a one-day wine and malt-only license for Conan Park Pavilion on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from one to five, for a barbecue baby shower. All paperwork and fees are in order, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, there's no contracts, uh, other documents requiring signatures, I don't believe there's any, is there, Heather? And so, okay. Uh, bill warrant. So I'll hear that show.
Warrant W one seven dash nine dated nine one sixteen, for the amount of five one thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, it's all approved. Open time for the public. Thank you. Approval of minutes, August sixteenth, twenty sixteen. August sixteenth, twenty sixteen, the ones are special, ones are approval of minutes for July and August. Um, also, release of approved executive session minutes, eight, twenty fifteen, to present. Entertained, go ahead.
I, I just want to make sure folks know what that is, so, um, the select board is supposed to review its minutes, like any board is supposed to, the executive session ones, from time to time, to release any ones that can be released. Um, generally, we release things when the matters are closed, um, when things are concluded, there are certain times we're never going to release minutes, so if it has to do with medical, we're never going to release the minutes. Uh, if it's a disciplinary action, the release, the minutes aren't going to be released. Right now, we currently have one collective bargaining unit who hasn't settled, so anything for all three of those collective bargaining units will not be released until we conclude, so that the information is not out there, and we're still working on that piece. But once a contract resolves, for instance, the police chief contract, those minutes are subject to be released. Um, currently, we are still in negotiation with the fire chief contract, so those would not be released yet. Um, one of the reasons we're doing this now, and we put it before the board, uh, in your packet, you have all of the minutes that are relevant to this, along with the list. Uh, the reason we're doing this is the press, from time to time, likes to request these minutes, and we've gotten such a request, to see which ones are available for the past year, and it's nice to, you know, in good faith, review the minutes and see which ones we can release.
Entertain a motion to approve, approve the minutes?
Well, I have here August sixteenth and April twenty-seventh.
So there's a list in your packet, um, I don't know if you see it there, it should be in your hard copy, Jim, that you have.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it's actually to approve for release, uh, of the minutes, and you give, I have the dates, I can read this out loud if you'd like me to, for the minutes, it's, it's up to the board, this document will become, uh, part of the file, so if anyone wants to request it, they can always request the list of which ones were approved specifically, um, but again, they go. But again, they go through from August 2015 through present, any of the ones we believe could be released.
And all those, we approved all the other ones already.
All of these minutes have been approved in...
Only adding these two tonight.
Yes, they've been approved in executive session, they just haven't been released as far as public goes.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Somebody's gotta make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, as discussed.
Second.
Okay, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, calendar and announcements, and Jackie, I did not forget about the Zip to Barn. I'm gonna put that at the end of this, okay? We have a joint planning and board of selectmen meeting to be announced. Our next board of selectmen's meeting is September 6th, 6 o'clock here, and Jackie, you raised the question of the Zip to Barn.
Yes, I just was...
Can you put your microphone on?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just wanted to update if you had any other information.
Myself and Randall were asked to review the Zip to Barn. This started with a discussion about painting it. You've probably seen the photographs of the interior and all the rest of that. We gave a punch list to the conservation commission. First priority is secure the building, second priority is to post the building. So it's all right now sitting in the conservation commission's territory. I'm still a little confused. I've been in town all my life, and I don't understand why that building is under the conservation commission when it's a historic building. It is a post-pegged construction barn. It's a very nice antique barn. I would think it'd be under historic commission rather than conservation, but I remember that when we purchased that land under grants and stuff, it was purchased through conservation. But needless to say, the town, that committee needs to start deciding how they're gonna approach this, so I'm sure we're gonna hear something in the future. Heather, have something?
Just one more piece, too. I did put in contact Marla Hank from the conservation commission, Bob Koizab from the historical commission, and Virginia Ahart from CPC. I believe that both Virginia and Bob have been invited by Marla to the next Concom meeting, which I want to say is next, oh, it's either tomorrow, next, it's sometime coming up in the future. I've got my dates mixed up in my head. Something's going on tomorrow night, and I said they'd be, oh, that's Greenway. So it must be, it must be in the next two weeks. I think it's like the 11th or 12th or some. But regardless, all those three parties have been put into the same room to start talking about this. There was a lot of conversation I did have with Bob Koizab on why, you know, historical commission wasn't initially involved, but I think all three parties together, CPC, historical, and Concom, I think they can figure this out and figure out a plan to move forward.
So it has been secured?
To my knowledge, as of today, it is not secured, because I drove by it and I could see it wasn't secured.
Well, how can we, how can we do that?
How can we do that?
Sooner than later, somebody, please.
They're, they're, they're the committee that's in charge with that.
Well, can, can we, as a select board, make that happen faster for the public safety?
You want us to take jurisdiction away from the conservation commission as a security builder?
In the...
I'm not trying to make this distasteful, but the reality...
I know, well, I don't wanna take anybody's, you know, power, but it is a safety issue, and I feel that we should, as a board, do something about it as soon as possible.
They have, I know a volunteer board, we're a volunteer board, they have funding, they have mechanisms to do this. We're not talking a large amount of money to secure that building. We're not.
Right.
I mean, realistically, they, even the doors that have the HASP on them, all they have to do is put padlock on. They have to take some wood and close up the holes that are open, but it's not that much wood. But again, that's their responsibility, such as the cemetery commission with deeds and stuff. I don't wanna see this board usurping other committees.
So let me, let me ask a basic question. When we get sued, who are they suing? Conservation commission or the town of Southampton?
They will be suing the conservation, they'll be suing the town of Southampton.
Exactly. So Jackie's question is, is well put. I think as a board, we say, "Get that thing boarded up as soon as possible." It's a town liability, and we're the town governing board.
Right, and somebody is gonna get hurt.
Yeah, I mean, the money's coming out of our pocket, and we can say the conservation commission should've done it, but we've gotta step up and say something to them, I think. And if we can't get it done, we have Randall go over there and put some plywood over there.
So you wanna, you wanna send a memo tomorrow to the conservation commission advising them that we consider this a priority?
Yeah, it's a dangerous situation, and we wanna board it up immediately, or we'll have to take action. I mean, that's my thought, and it sounds like that's where you were going.
Right, exactly.
This a motion?
That's a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's a matter of record now. Okay, that said, see, I didn't forget about it.
Well, I mean, you know, I just wanna clarify, I don't think it's the conservation's committee, I don't think it's their fault, it just...
Oh, I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming anybody.
You know what I mean, like, I'm not, I'm not trying to like usurp any of their...
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just looking at...
Responsibilities, I'm just saying, I feel like it's really urgent and it needs to be done as soon as possible.
Yeah, well, I thought it was gonna be done. I drove by purposely today to take a look, and it was like, I thought I would've saw something. But, all right. Okay, we're gonna move into executive session. We'll be moving into executive session under chapter 30A, section 21, item 1, 3, 4, and 6, and we will not be returning to open session. Roll call, vote.